Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our third budget workshop. We are hopeful to get through all of our presentations this evening. If that's the case, then we will conclude our budget workshops. And the next formal presentation will take place regarding the budget workshop, which you, I'm sorry, the budget adoption, which you'll see later in this presentation relative to the timing of that. So tonight, we're going to hear from our building level reports, our budget budgets. We're going to go from there to central administration, and then support services, and then lastly, our undistributed budget. So it's my pleasure to welcome our Assistant Superintendent Melanie Ward to discuss our building level budgets to date.
Thank you very much, and thank you, as always, to Darren and me for compiling all of the data that allows me to share with the board information about the school-based budgets. I'm not sure how I get elected to do this every year, but I like doing it. So glad to be here to share a little bit of what happens as we create the budgets at the school level. It's going to let me move. Nope, there. So clearly, what goes on in the schools is the heart of our work. This is why, the reason that we're all here, is for what happens in our schools every day. The school-based budgets account for approximately 60% of our total budget on an annual basis. And you can see here listed on the slide some of the major categories that fall into the school budget category. This is a brief look at six years of history for the total amount budgeted in the school-based budgets, five previous years. And the yellow bar shows you the projected budgets for the '21-'22 school year, with a very tiny uptick from last year. This shows you the same information, but the bars now are each broken down to represent the historical and projected budgets by level, with the blue bars representing the high school budgets, the moon bars, the middle school, and the gold bars, the elementary school building portion of the budget. And you can see that the proportions stay relatively the same year over year. These are the school-based budgets by, as we look at them, in a cost-per-pupil basis. So you can see, for example, this school here, at a cost-per-pupil at the high school level is about $8,686, middle school $11,145, and elementary $10,715. Oh, I'm sorry, I flipped that. Elementary is the blue bars. I should put my glasses on when I'm presenting to you. My apologies. The budget for the school buildings primarily comes from the property tax levy, but there are some aspects of the school-based budget that, again, tie back to the instructional aid materials, textbooks, library books, computer hardware, computer software. There are pieces of it that are Bosse's aidable, and the title grants do supplement some of the work that happens at the building levels as well. 97% of the building-based budgets, however, are staffing, so this is the budget that accounts for the vast majority of our teaching staff, counselors, health staff, administrators, clerical support that work in the building. So this is why, again, you'll also see that this budget remains fairly steady on a year-over-year basis, and the increases are typically increases based on just staffing costs and contractual obligations, et cetera. There are meaning 3% of the building-based budget are tied to our Bosse's tech ed programs, instructional materials, which are those aidable categories, and a tiny little sliver for discretionary spending. So I'm going to walk you through each of those three components to just paint a little more detailed picture about what's involved in those. So the career and tech ed budget through Bosse's, this is for our kids who attend EMCC. And I know, it's been a few years, but I know several years ago, the board did have an opportunity to visit EMCC and see some of those programs at work. Every year, we send somewhere between 36 and 42 students to attend the EMCC program. While they're there, not only are they getting very specialized instruction in any one of these areas that I've identified on the slide, but many of them are also, at the same time, earning their English, math, or science-required credits for graduation. Students who complete the program at Bosse's, many of these are two-year programs. If they complete the two years and successfully complete professional exams at the end of them, they leave the EMCC program, ready to walk right into the workforce in a very well-paying job typically. Many of our students finish up EMCC and then go on for two-year or four-year education in the same or similar field. But this really gives kids a truly authentic and very rigorous learning experience. So we're really proud of the work that our kids do as part of this program. The building instructional materials, again, this is our textbooks, library, hardware, software. These funds are allocated out to the buildings, but the actual expenditure of these monies is often done at a centralized, through a centralized process, through my office or the technology office. The discretionary budget, this is really the only little slice of the pie that the building principals have really any control over how they allocate this money and how they decide to spend this money. And this covers a whole host of things that take place at the building level, some of which I have laid out on the slide for you. This is allocated annually on a per-pupil basis. The per-pupil allocation has not changed for the last many years, so swings that you see here are typically just swings based on changing enrollment. When we think about the building budgets and we think about the impact that the pandemic has had there, some of these, you, there's some overlap here with what I presented as terms of impacts in the curriculum and instructional budget, which there are obvious reasons for that overlap were so intertwined. But clearly, as you recall, from March to June, all instruction at all levels moved completely to remote. There was very limited live instructional time. We prioritized core area instruction and graduation requirements. We handed out approximately 700 devices for students to use at home. We suspended grading practices, attendance assessments. We really got teachers focused on giving kids feedback and engagement, and the real goal was to keep kids engaged with the learning through the closure last spring. All state assessments last spring were canceled. AP exams were shortened and moved to an entirely online format last spring. And we were able to take good advantage of our paraprofessionals in terms of helping support students and kind of track kids down and keep them on track with their schoolwork. This year, since July, we've implemented the temporary learning models with some, I think, basically great success in most cases. Those temporary learning models did result in some reduced course options for students at the secondary level who opted into the fully remote program, and there was some reduction in our elementary special area instruction, both remote and in-person. We had to reallocate staff to assign them to classroom-based instruction, so this is where we had, for example, library EAs from the secondary level were shifted down to the elementary level to provide some coverage for pods. Some of our math AIS folks at the elementary level were covering pods, so we had to reallocate and account for every adult being part of the process of allowing us to open. We have had 15 fully remote elementary class sections and over 100 secondary teachers teaching at least one class in the remote environment. There are, I think, about six or eight secondary teachers that are full-time remote, so the vast majority of our remote program is being done by teachers who have one foot in the hybrid world and one foot in the remote world. Our common technology platforms that we've talked about here before have been really key to making this work, but the implementation of those has required significant learning on the part of our staff. Physical layout in every building, and I know as you have toured the buildings, you've seen this, has changed significantly. We swapped out tables for desks. We made use of every nook and cranny. We've got kids doing band in cafeterias, and chorus, and auditoriums, and lunches, and gyms, and so everything has been moved around in order to accommodate the kids when they're there. The podding at the elementary and middle schools was put in place to help keep kids safe. Extracurricular clubs and activities were fully remote until after the February break, when we were able to bring back particularly some of our music ensembles in the extracurricular environment, and we're beginning to bring back some more live extracurricular activities for kids. Fall athletics, as you know, was very limited. We handed out 1,000 devices this year in the Wednesday afternoons that we devoted to professional learning communities, both at the elementary and the secondary level. If you ask any one of our teachers, that has been the key to what has held everybody together, allowed them to plan collaboratively, keep their sanity, and sustain the temporary learning models for the entire school year. There are a lot of things that have gone really well this year. As challenging as it has all been, we're all still here, we're safe, we're healthy. We are one of the only districts in the area that has been able to have our elementary students in school, interacting with teachers every day of the week, and we're really proud of that, and we know that that makes a difference, not only for the students and their learning, but for the community at large. And that was a real goal of us as we did this work last summer. Preliminary data shows us that our academic performance is holding. We have, of course, concerns about individual students and individual areas, but overall, academic performance remains fairly solid. The alignment that we've seen of our curriculum across buildings amongst grade levels has never been stronger. So that's been a huge silver lining out of this whole pandemic, is the work that teachers have done together to align their curriculum pacing and their instructional practices so that they can take advantage of that PLC time on Wednesdays to be planning collaboratively and moving their curriculum forward, and adjusting their instruction and their curriculum to accommodate for less time with kids. The instructional technology tools have made a world of difference. Kids and teachers have learned to use them very effectively, and they keep growing in their capacity in that area. And I would say, across the board, our teachers are learning instructional practices that will hold them really well as we move into the future. So it's, again, one of those situations where we've been sort of backed into having to learn some really great things that will help us take significant moves forward going into the future. As we think about next year, a lot of our thoughts are now turning to the work that's going to have to happen at the buildings to transition kids back to school full-time in terms of social-emotional, executive functioning, reducing that sense of isolation. So there's already conversations going on about what it will take to make that successful transition back to full-time in school, how different it will feel for all of us to see a classroom with 25, 26 kids in it, and really getting everybody through that hump of what that's going to look and feel like. We know that we need to do work to help teachers meet the wide range of academic skills that will be in the, sitting in our classrooms next year. We'll continue to work on alignment with our roadmaps. We will continue to support best instruction and assessment practices, making use of our instructional technology, and of course, we will maintain our focus on health and safety measures of all types, not just COVID-related, but all types of health and safety measures. So all of these things, these are kind of the big buckets that our building administrators are thinking about as they're beginning to plan for reopening. Of course, we still have a lot of unknowns and some things that would really hamper that reopening process. The social distancing is the thing that is keeping us from having all kids back with us, so we're certainly hoping to see that go away. We don't know yet what the state will tell us relative to any requirements around providing remote options. That would be a significant factor that we would certainly have a budgetary impact if we had to continue to provide something in the remote environment. We don't know what our requirements will be relative to rapid testing, PPE, et cetera. So those all, again, will be budgetary considerations that we're needing to account for as we plan for next year. And just to kind of tie it all up together, this is the current versus the projected budget by level, and you see overall, it's a less than 1% increase year over year. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to do my best to answer them.
Just looking at the cost per pupil, it kind of struck me that the middle school was higher than high school in the elementary. Is that traditionally the case, or is it just how the number of students broke out?
It's traditionally the case, and I would say it has, it's connected really to the teaming structure at the middle school, so there's less variation in how sectioning happens at the middle school level because the, we highly value that team structure at the middle school. It's, I think, part of why we just got our sixth designation for both of our middle schools being schools to watch, which is something, again, to really celebrate. And I think to celebrate the fact that we went through that process in the middle of a pandemic as well, but it's definitely, you know, part of that, yeah.
And similar question, how does our cost per pupil compare around the area?
So I'm going to look to Darren to help me with that question.
I don't know if it's the specific part, number of grade we are in, right in the middle.
About right in the middle, across the county.
Yeah, ten, ten points as well. It's middle school level, if you remember, is the only thing you can find by three grades of the number two, but being three grades is a little smaller.
Right, that's a good point, yeah. Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
I have the pleasure of starting out with our central administration budget. This year, one of the things that made this year different in our district planning team as we set our budget guidelines was looking at it from the lines that we never had a look at it from before. So I charged the district planning team with answering the questions relative to how do we best plan for and budget for a year, given what we've been through the last year, and thinking about what our students are going to need and our staff are going to need, and our community is going to need in order to have a successful school year. Our district planning team consists of all of our internal stakeholders, everyone from administrators to teachers to paraprofessional to clerical, along with PTSA members and also community member, parents without kids in the district. And we looked at the prompt of what do we need to be really mindful as we build this budget versus any other budget. So thinking about that transition back to school next year, the following things are areas that we felt needed specific attention with our students. And the first was moving back to our work relative to full inclusivity and equity for all of our students, also recognizing that social-emotional learning supports will be more important than ever. So for example, when we talk about the budget and thinking about social-emotional supports, a quick example would be, for example, how are we orienting students back to school, and how are we providing support for them once we're here, and what roles may be called our web and link and other clubs and advisors play a role in welcoming our students back. Also recognizing that the mental health toll that this year off has taken on our students in working with Pittsford Youth Services and others to look at increased supports across our nine buildings and how that can support our students as they come back. Safe school, very many safe facilities. We have not revisited a lot of the initiatives that we had started prior to us leaving last March. I hate to bring us back to that time, but that year was the year that we were planning for and dealing with prevention and response to things like active shooters. So we have areas that we need to continue to improve on as we bring our students back to school next year. We also recognize that some students have thrived in this environment, some students have struggled in this environment, some students have carried on as typical in this environment. So we know that we're going to have to find ways to identify and support the wide range of academic needs. And that means everything from on one end, AIS and remedial support, to the other end for students that are accustomed to being challenged in different ways. We, as you heard Melanie discuss before, the curriculum has never been more solid and exemplary than this year, and that, in part, has been through PLCs. You'll see part of this when I talk about the district calendar as well later in the regular board meeting, but time for consistent professional collaboration focused on student learning. Technology has been pivotal for us to be successful in this area, and we've recognized that we have used, and our computers where we've outlasted their expiration or recycling dates, and so we're going to need to look at the fleet of our technology, but also maintain some of the software that we felt was incredibly useful for our students and engaging for our students this year. We also recognize that the sense of community has been hindered during this time. Actually, in some regards, it's improved. We've seen our community at our best, but we've been isolated for so long. And when I think about our community, I'm thinking about our student community, I'm thinking about the community at large, our staff community, and finding ways for us to get together in different ways to celebrate and come back together. We have several transitions that are going to take place that we've missed. Even our ninth graders, for example, who are in the high-grade model, have not really experienced high school as a ninth grader. Similarly, our sixth graders as a middle schooler, or our kindergartners as kindergartners. And I think about our kindergartners' first experience to school, they feel that it's about masks and sitting in desks and six feet distancing. So looking at all the different things we need to do over the summer to prepare our school community to come back and transition to in-person learning. Relative to class sizes, I think about this more along the lines of the experiences that were lost for students in classes that otherwise we weren't able to run because of restrictions, and making sure, for example, our music program is allowed to run fully, regardless of maybe not hitting certain thresholds, in order to get that back on track. We do recognize that professional development is going to be significant. Again, this is always cornerstone to our success. So again, looking at equity and inclusion, tiered supports to address the range of learners in the classroom, the technology platforms and leveraging that with software and applications, our SEL work, curriculum assessment and instructional practices, certainly health and safety preparedness is in the changes we're going to need to revert back to, and our PLC work needs to continue. And also understanding the time that we're living in, and the impact COVID has had on families and income. So one of the things that our district planning team has felt very strongly about is to make sure we do not exceed the tax cap, that we would like to open schools fully without temporary learning models. That means without remote learning, if permitted by New York State Department of Health. So for example, there's an executive order that mandated that we offered remote learning. That has not expired, and it won't expire until there's another executive order. We also understand the expectations the community has on our performance in a lot of different areas, and we want to make sure that we're able to maintain the breadth, in-depth program while staying under the tax cap. Thinking outside the box, looking to leverage some of the supports that we anticipate students needing by partnering with local colleges, also looking at our budget from a form of savings instead of going away on field trips, looking to leverage technology for virtual trips, similarly with our travel and conference and professional development. We also believe that during this time, we've existed electronically and were able to use a lot less paper and ink, and continue to look at cost efficiencies to further address the impact of underfunded and unfunded mandates. We also believe it's imperative to maintain fiscal stability now and into the future by making sure our reserve accounts are sustainable, looking at partnerships and shared services, protecting and maintaining our highest bond rating, protecting our community's investment in facilities and infrastructure, which means looking at ways to have ongoing improvements so that we're not looking at major projects down the road, and certainly advocacy, which is ongoing with legislators, relative to appropriate levels of funding. So tonight, specifically, I'm going to talk about my four areas of the budget, which are the Board of Education, Superintendent's Office, Personnel Services, and Public Information. The central administration office represents 0.9% of our total district budget. The county average is 1.13%. Our cost per pupil is $199, and the county average is $233. Central administration in recent years has undergone some restructuring and changes to address Board of Education goals and initiatives, different mandates. We have a five-year average annual increase of 5.5, oh, 5.8%, which you'll see where that comes from in a minute. You can see the different areas and the budget increases. The Superintendent's Office is higher this year than the year prior. The Board of Education is relatively flat, as are the other areas. Last year, or this current year, our total central administration budget was 1.3, 1 million 238,000, and we're now at 1 million 297,000, which is a 3.9% increase. As far as staffing is concerned, we have seven volunteer Board of Education members. We have three people, counting myself, in the Superintendent's Office. Personnel Services has four members, and Public Information has 3.25, for a total of 10.25 FTEs for the central administrative staffing. Some things to highlight for the Board of Education budget in the county, the average is $17.27 per pupil, and in Pittsford, it is $13. The things that have changed in the Board of Education of note are the discontinuance of the NISBA membership. The Board decided to take that money and allocate it to professional development, specific to, primarily specific to equity and inclusion, and primarily because of the work in Monroe County School Boards being exemplars in the state, and feeling that the professional development here is exactly what could support the growth of our school boards and districts. The other thing of note, that's still a question right now relative to the budget, is the ballots and the voting. We are not sure if we are doing mail-in voting for the budget and board elections, which is a significant cost last year, and it is budgeted for for this year. The work of my office specifically, and I'd just like to take us back, this is really the impact of the pandemic and how it shifted a lot of the work that we've done, taking us back to last summer, coordinating with our Pittsford Foundation donations, writing cards, delivering and mailing $60,000 to our families in need, which, it just speaks volumes for our community, to be able to send $100 to $300 at a time in grocery cards to rugmans, as well as supporting the Pittsford Food Cup. Collaborating with stakeholders, our Board of Ed, PTSA, nurses, teachers, administrators, worked this summer ad nauseam trying to ascertain what would be the best learning models, how to implement health and safety protocols, implications on different contracts and PPE as well. Through my office, we did regular weekly updates to staff and the community as we were trying to work through COVID. We held community and staff forums, attended faculty meetings, created a dedicated website for COVID-19, provided surveys for different learning models, scheduling students, quite a bit of professional development, worked through transportation logistics as far as routes, and specifically working with buildings on drop-off and pickup procedures. We had a tremendous amount of restructuring of staffing that occurred, especially at the elementary level, which caused the domino effect, as we took secondary staffing to bring them down to the elementary to allow us to be able to have our students in five days a week. Our elementary pods included different staff working in different positions. It was a lot of work, and I have to give my, the principals a lot of credit in scheduling and everyone who had their roles re-assigned this year. At the secondary level, we did everything from hallways and stairwells with relation to directionality, looking at pods to the extent possible, worked through lunches, special areas, and furniture. We were a district that spent a lot of time in value We were a district that spent a lot of time in valued cooperative learning, and so we went to round tables in the classrooms. And during COVID, we realized we can no longer sit around a table, and so we actually put all the furniture in the storage and then had to borrow desks from other local districts to get our students back in. Weekly meetings with the County of Health Department, evolving guidance, especially when we got into the yellow zone. We became a certified lab, testing about 3,000 students and staff. We had to recreate systems and structures for contact tracing, recording, reporting, and monitoring cases to the county and state. We had to continually involve our morning screening with students and athletes and parents. We worked on systems and structures for vaccination signups, systems and structures for substitute teachers, knowing that they're in a shortage and knowing that during the second vaccination, many staff would be out. We created advocacy for metrics to reopen. We've been ongoing relative to our planning meetings for reopening schools and looking at different scenarios. So we spent a lot of this year meeting regularly to prepare to close and then to prepare to reopen. Our committees also looked at opening clubs and sports, assessing protocols, looking at areas to loosen, areas to tighten. We're currently working on senior ball and graduation and awards nights and parades for seniors and also not forgetting about our remote learners and making sure they're included in all we do. And then the last thing I would just share is that the use of our meeting times are precious and it seems like the majority of our use of all of our district meetings have been focused to the different scenarios that we've been planning for. So as we look at 2021, 22, the work is going to shift and I bring that back to the budget guidelines. And these are the areas that we'll be presenting to you more thoroughly in the budget adoption. So you'll be able to see specifically the areas that have a budgetary impact as we welcome our students back hopefully fully for the 21, 22 school year. Coming into my office, we see an increase in the budget and that is an area where we have added the cultural competency and inclusivity. Last board meeting, you were able to meet Tasha, who is working with us through BOSI's One. Will be one of her primary districts that she's working with. And we've included and maintained Madely McGee in this area as well. So the area of growth in my budget is relative to our equity and inclusion initiative that we need to get back on track with in a more deliberate way next year. In terms of resource services, we have four FTEs in the area with the primary responsibility of induction and DAS and hiring and retention mandates like APPR and also a follow-up intern and substitute program we're involved in to bring us the newest pipeline of teachers that we support. The Public Information Office has been critical more than ever during the COVID pandemic and all of the work that they've done during this year. You can see relative to newsletters and managing a brand new website and social media. And a lot of my updates and newsletters are run through this office. So you can see a decrease in that area going into next year of 1.34%. Then we have the Board of Education and Central Administration put together with a total spending of 0.9% per pupil and with the county, I'm sorry, $199 or 0.9% per pupil with the county average of 234, 1.13. This area is ranked eighth lowest out of 17 schools, so just below the middle of the pack. And you can see how those areas are broken down. So now I'm going to turn it over to Darren, who will begin with our Support Services budget and going into our Undistributed budget. I'm sorry. Are there any questions from the board?
Darren, if you don't finish, you want to bring this in? Can you go report?
I could. Good evening. I only have 184 slides after everybody else did about 17. Support Services, basically think of that as everything in the district that doesn't have direct relation to providing services or education to the students. So it encompasses 222 full-time FT and I really mean when I say professionals, especially during this pandemic, you really see who you can rely on in times like this and these folks have been amazing. Most of these people were here working while others were on quarantine and you'll see some of the things that they were able to accomplish during that time. It's about $15.9 million, so it's a small percentage, about 11% of the total budget compared to about 19% of the staffing. So I'm going to move pretty quickly here. Maybe I can even actually get you a break at the end. If I'm going too fast, feel free to stop me. The annual budget increase is 1.3% for when you look at Support Services as a whole. We're next to the lowest in the county. When I use that benchmark data and as you've heard earlier tonight, this is from a tool that we use that actually goes out to the New York State Education website, grabs information from their database. It's based on actual spending from two years ago, okay? And we have the lowest percent of our budget, total budget that's spent on Support Services compared to the rest of the county at 10.4% compared to the county at 14.1. So putting it together as far as looking at all the different components, there's finance and auditing, technology support, operations and maintenance and transportation. You see them stacked up there. It's rather flat, as well as when you put it together, looking at objective expense such as salaries, contractual, et cetera. That is probably a difference. Support Services is different than the rest of the district in the sense that most of the district, like you saw with Melanie, the salaries is by far the biggest portion. When you're dealing with things like utilities and fuel for buses, et cetera, your supplies and materials and contractual tend to be a pretty good portion. From a staffing standpoint, very flat over the years. Transportation continues to be a bit of a struggle as far as keeping it fully staffed with drivers. So if anybody would like to be a bus driver, I know the Board of Education members don't get paid to be Board of Education members. We can pay a little more as a bus driver, just saying. Shameless plug. The Finance Office does all the accounting for all the funds and when you put them all together, including food service, which is not part of this because we're just talking about the portion of the budget that the voters vote on, about $180 million that we're responsible for and some pretty big numbers there, such as almost 30,000 paychecks for 1,700 employees and so on and so forth. One thing that caught my eye was on the benefit side, we're responsible for 2,200 insurance plans that we track and take care of. What's interesting is we just turned a corner this year in the sense that we have more retiree health insurance plans than we have active health insurance plans. And you'll see the impacts of that in a few minutes. So looking at Finance and Auditing, you can see the trend over the years and broken down by object of expense. We're looking at just under a $12,000 increase or 1.17%. We've averaged over the last five years of 1.7%. One of our greatest accomplishments, I think, is doing things in a certain way that we've decreased audit comments. We're actually in the process of being audited right now by the Comptroller's Office and we've sustained the highest bond rating that we can possibly have during very difficult financial times and that saves us a lot of money when we finance in the future. Staffing and recruiting, just like every department in Support Services, continues to be a challenge. When we have a vacancy, it's hard to get a good, strong pool of candidates. Moving on to Operations and Maintenance, even though last spring, most people were not here, our Operations and Maintenance folks were here, contractors were looking for work, so it was a good time to get people in here to do some minor maintenance projects and they really had at it. They did a great job. They thought ahead about ventilation, making sure filters were changed and systems were maintained and operating just enough, just to give a few examples. You heard at the budget, or excuse me, the workshop session that you had last week with the architect, we do a lot of maintenance in district. When you look at other districts, because their building aid ratio is so high, they tend to let maintenance slide year to year and they do it in a capital project. We try to keep up on it. So 135 million square feet, that's a lot of square footage for a district our size and for the number of people. Basically, each cleaner slash custodian is responsible on average for 24,000 square feet and they clean that nightly. So again, Operations and Maintenance is pretty flat throughout. Our Utilities, a lot of the capital project work that we've done over the years has really paid in spades as far as controlling those costs. We're looking at a 1.6% increase and we've averaged 1.2% over the last five years. Our per pupil cost is $1,300 and that puts us right around the middle of the pack. The county average is 1549. Administrative Technology, I'm not going to go into great depth of this. Dr. Kimmer spoke to much of this the last time he was here. This is the portion that's not in the classrooms per se. This would be like the Network Operations Center and all the infrastructure that keeps things lit up. There is no staffing involved with this. It's all BOSI's, so we do get BOSI's aid back on that. And this gives you a glance at where those costs are. So some of the costs are dependent on what's going on at the BOSI's level and BOSI's sometimes can give us more expertise or flexibility to more consultants and other vendors out there and sometimes it can be a little more constraining as far as we have to order materials from their catalog, if you will. So we're looking at about a 1% increase for this year, 3.6% over the last five years. And part of the reason why you see that increase in 2019, 20, that has to do with full vacay. So we had to invest in technology for the new students. We are the second highest in the county at 588 versus 376, but I would caution that a lot of districts code these types of expenditures in different areas, especially if they don't use BOSI's a lot and they use in-house, more in-house staff. Transportation, 1.1 million miles per year. That's about 6,000 miles a day. You know, the budget is a plan and we're planning for a normal year for next year. We transport 6,076 students and our net cost after aid is about $320 per student. And Kathy and the folks over Transportation have really done a great job of trying to control costs and come up with creative things such as with the mechanics, having a team approach to maintaining the buses, tracking maintenance records on a per-bus basis and doing things to be preventative. And I think that's gone to prove that we have a very successful DOT inspection rate. So we actually have the lowest cost per pupil base for transportation of anybody in the county and by about 35%. So this is a common area that a lot of times taxpayers, when they call me up, say, I want to see transportation be more efficient. And I almost laugh because to make it more efficient would mean your child is going to walk the one miles or two miles per SCD guidelines. Our switch over to gas buses has been very successful. They're cleaner operating. They seem to have less maintenance issues and the bus drivers and the students seem to like them better. They're less noisy. We have the best New York State DOT inspection rate. So basically, if the inspector comes to Pittsburgh, there's only a 0.7% chance that they're going to find something on the bus where they say you have to pull it and fix Our biggest concern right now is post-pandemic, what's going to be required of the program that we're not aware of, as well as combine that with the shortage of bus drivers. So again, it's not too late to train to be a bus driver. Because of our low accident rate and safety record as well as the New York DOT service rating, our insurance per mile and per seat mile is much lower than most districts, so that helps control the cost considerably. Our aid ratio on our transportation is not as high as some districts due to our wealth. We are about 64%. That percentage is actually, I anticipate, going up slightly over the next year or two and that's because of, due to the pandemic, the non allowable miles like sports trips, et cetera, field trips, we're not doing those. So basically, every mile that we're traveling is an eligible mile. However, we are anticipating some decreases in state aid because we're not incurring some certain costs such as now using as much fuel. So one of the more complex areas of transportation I tend to get a lot of questions about and probably drive Kathy Herrick, the director, crazy analyzing this, has to do with what I call out-of-district transportation and that might be for parochial schools, it might be for special education. So I tried to give you some examples here, planning on a typical year, using last year and the year before as a basis. But on average, we have 476 kids going to private parochial schools, for example, and that's to 19 different locations, 18 of which are outside of our district borders. It takes 27 buses to make that happen. And then special needs, you can see the same type of thing. So when you put it all together, that's 53 buses. That's almost half of our fleet is dedicated to transporting 577 students, or about 10% of our population. And we manage to do that with a very high efficiency. I'm going to go through, quickly through this because you've already seen it and it's pretty familiar with previous years, but we are asking the voters to purchase 12 buses to replace them per the Board of Education's replacement schedule of 10 years or 100,000 miles, excuse me, $1.388 million. We're asking to pull money out of the bus purchase reserves in order to do that. We're not asking to increase taxes and any state aid that is generated on those buses, roughly 64% or $930,000 will go back into the reserve to help replenish it to be useful into future years.
Darren, this is great. I just have one quick question and not really a question. I just wanted you to clarify for any public that may be listening. When you say locations, private and parochial, and then transportation, 18 out of the district transported students, can you just explain that so that...
It's 18, there's 18 locations outside of district border, or the district boundaries. So we might be going to Greece, we might be going to Webster.
Okay.
So going on to what's known as unallocated and then distributed and a kind of a theme for the entire budget, we kind of almost jokingly say pieces of this as far as there's much that we don't know and unfortunately, what we do know seems to always change. So we just have to kind of roll with it. Again, the budget is a plan. We're planning for next year. If you recall, at this point in time last year, we were currently closed or fully remote. We didn't know for sure if we were going to open or not in September. We built a budget with the plan that we would reopen and then around the time of the vote, it looked apparent that we might not be reopening in September, but very hopeful that we would be in January. So we're constantly having to make those changes. So basically, we planned for a typical year and then earmarked money in that and then as we had to change our programs accordingly, we used that money in different ways. And if you recall back to when Mike Leone was here for his last meeting, he talked about the $1.6 million of basically changing the way we deliver education and had to reallocate resources. So the thinking now is if we were to reopen fully, basically to a normal year, that that would go away and we'd go back to the original plan. So the premise for unallocated is that there's many different things within the budget that don't allocate easily back to all the various programs and services. Today, with today's technology, it is possible, but we're stuck with a 50-year-old plus archaic system from the New York State Education Department as far as how we report things. And so this is the way we, this is where a lot of things get put. The main buckets for Undistributed are debt service and interfund transfers, insurance, judgments and fees, and then employee benefits, and we'll get a little deeper into that in a few minutes. So all three buckets is about $55.3 million. That represents almost 39% of our total budget. So it's a big factor and when anything happens in this area, it really drives the budget. New this year is, if you recall, BOSI's did a capital project and you had to sign that intermunicipal agreement a couple of years ago. Well, the debt for that came on this year, but also so does the building aid. So you'll see that reflected in here. So by far, out of that... So by far, out of that piece of pie, $42 million is benefits. Looking at the debt service, this is voter approved. It's for all of our capital projects in which we ask to issue debt. Some of our capital projects have been fully paid for or partially paid for from the Capital Reserve. A $106 million project in the, back, we did in the early 2000s, that debt is coming to a close in the next couple of years. And so what I'm showing there is, when you put everything together, the transfer to the special aid is in yellow, and the burgundy is the transfer to the capital fund. So those other transfers, for example, for summer school special education program or ESY, per the state, they pay a portion of it, and we're required to move money into the special aid fund to pay for the balance. That's why we have that there, and it's about $185,000. Every year, we do about $250,000 transfer to capital. That's to help fund the minor maintenance and repair projects throughout the district and emergency-type things that might go wrong in the district. So intricacies of debt service is, if you recall, the state gives building aid or pays building aid, but they do it based on their own type of amortization schedule. So our struggle is to take this debt schedule that we have and somehow try to make that fit the payment schedule of the state, and then the state, every five years, recalculates that. We did a refunding of our debt a few years ago that was very successful for us. And if you look at that chart, we've done a pretty good job of keeping that portion of the state aid, and compared to the blue bars, or the blue top part, which would be the local piece, trying to keep that pretty level. So even if the total debt service goes up or down, it's coinciding with the state aid. Insurance, judgments, and fees, it's been pretty flat over the last several years. And the biggest expenditure there, excuse me, is the property and casualty insurance. We have very good rates through nicer New York State School Insurance reciprocal. We have a very good rating with them, experience rating. And then the other thing is the BOSI's. Basically, Board of Cooperative Education Services, you're all shareholders in that. Every, all school districts in the county are, on the east side of the county, I should say. So it's based on your, our water or your wealth for daily average attendance. We are the wealthiest district, so we share a pretty good chunk of their administrative expenses. The big thing to remember there is what really drives their administrative expenses, all health insurance and benefit costs for retirees are in the administrative section. Employee benefits, this is the big area. It's about $42 million. It includes everything from teacher and service and longevity payments to retirement systems for both employees and teachers, social security, and various insurances such as medical, dental, workers' compensation, et cetera, and then if there's any separation payments. So at the end of each year, we have to actually accrue and record it for people when, if they have, such as if they get paid for unused sick days when they retire, that's how we record that and account for that. It's really been a driving force in our annual budget. Basically, if you take a third of your personal budget, and even if you only move it 1%, it's going to make a big dent on your bottom line. In the last 10 years, benefits as a whole has gone from 24% to 29% of our total budget. We've done a lot of work to try to flatten that curve, if you will. The retirement systems has been the most volatile. At the lowest, it was 0.43% a few years ago, and I think it was two years ago, it got up to 22%. Health insurance has actually been a bright spot in the sense that a couple of years ago, we had a 1% increase, and we've topped out at 13 for an average of 6%, but this is far below, and you'll see that in a few minutes, far below the community-rated plans. So looking at this chart, this is just charting out the percentage of change in benefits from one year to the next. And as you go to the right, you can see that we've worked hard to try to bring that down and kind of keep it more consistent and not have as wild of a change. If the economy does something really, really drastic, it could have a drastic impact on the retirement systems. So we've done this through negotiations and contractual bargaining agreements. Other big help was the health consortium that we belong to, all the school districts in Monroe County, moving to a self-funded plan has helped drastically. So talking about RASHP, for those who might not know, in 2004, we entered into a consortium with 17 districts in both BOSI's, and currently, we have over 15,000 plans, and I believe right now, it's 42,000 lives are covered by the plan. I'm on the board of directors, as well as five union representatives from the area school districts. And it's interesting, and I think we do a pretty good job when we get to the table, taking off our school district hat and say, "Okay, we're helping to run, becoming like the rest of you and helping to run an insurance concern." And our goal is to make sure that that insurance plan is there for our employees into the future, but also that it's fiscally solvent. Two years ago, we went to the self-funded model. That's helped us to not have to pay the federal taxes. And the chart on the left gives you an idea of what the plan would be if we had stayed in the community-rated. The line is what we've actually paid, and the green is the savings. It's very difficult to do this chart recently, because Excellis doesn't even offer a plan to the community similar to what the schools have. We are their largest book of business right now, so it does give us some bargaining power. And then on the right, you see the percentage of change in the RASHP2 plans as compared to Excellis average and the national average. So it's like the best of the bad news as far as the change. So as far as accomplishments, the health and workers' comp consortiums are working The New York State Department of Financial Services approving, a very arduous process to become self-funded, but it's a testament to show that the plan is viable into the future. I'm going to move forward on this, because I know we're getting short on time. Our debt outlook is very favorable. Doing that refunding that we did a couple of years ago helps. We have the highest bond rating, and we continue to keep that. And the pandemic, that comment is kind of a positive and a negative. It moved our target for the next large capital project. Our financial position allowed us to be able to do it, but it's also a challenge, because it compresses our time to be able to develop that and get approved. So we have our final to-do, is we're working with the various stakeholders to write their narratives for the budget, for that binder that you get. BOSI's is going to be providing us any day now their updated costs. Sectioning is going on currently with Mr. Clark, and we're keeping our fingers crossed on the state budget. Right now, it's very, very quiet. Obviously, from watching the news, the governor's got other things on his mind. And then we will mend the budget and the information and get that to you, incorporating all of that information. And then here's what we have for the upcoming meetings. We'll probably be doing some more budget discussions at the next meeting, during the regular meeting, updating on some things. And the public hearing is on May 10th, and the vote on May 18th. Any questions?
I have one quick question, Darren. On the BOSI's allocation, you'd said that we're the wealthiest district.
Yeah.
For those at home that may be watching, how is that wealth determined?
It's a combination of income, the average income for the district. So when you fill out your state tax return, you have to put it in your school district. That's where they get that information from. They also look at the property values. So it's the resident weighted average daily attendance. So they take that information, and they have a formula to weight our attendance of our students and come up with a ratio, 1.0 being average. Okay? And we are 1.43 at the moment.
Is everyone good? Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Pittsburgh Board of Education meeting. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda? Thanks. It was quick. Any edits? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. May I have an approval of the minutes from February 23rd, please? Thanks, Val and Renee. Any edits? All in favor? Motion carried. We have a delay, Irene, so it looked like you opposed, but I think, okay. Board of Education reports, we have quite a few dates to remember here. Just make sure that you're following the calendar, because things are changing. We do have quite a few meetings that are in person. We do have some that are still going to be via Zoom due to the presenters. And so I just ask you to be flexible as we go through the next month. We do have a communications outreach, sorry, Deb, but we have scheduled a Communications Outreach Committee meeting for this Thursday, the 11th. Other meeting reports, we've had a couple of meetings come up this past week that I think some of our board members would like to report out on. One was a town hall meeting with Samra Brook regarding mental health. So I know that Val and Robin and Renee, you all attended. If you could or want to share anything from that town hall, that would be great.
Sorry, just getting my notes out. It was amazing. That's really an understatement. There had to be over 150 people in attendance. It was nice to see my colleagues there. I could go on and on, just a couple of quick highlights. It was great that the whole program started off with hearing from college students, from middle school and high school students. It really was a clear picture across the board as to what is going on in the lives of all of our students. Do either of you want to add to that about what we heard, or?
I would just say, I was really impressed with the students who spoke. They were very brave to share their experiences with us. And I was also really impressed with how they were finding ways to cope. Students talked about leaning on friends to help them just get up and out of bed in the morning. They talked about reaching out to their non, maybe a non-specific class teacher. So for example, one student talked about needing help in math, but not being able to get ahold of a math teacher and going to a history teacher to get support. Students talked about reaching out to their trusted adult for support. And they also talked about the fact that, I don't know why I'm doing that. They also talked about just the mindset around mental health evolving because of the pandemic. So maybe prior to that, maybe somebody had mentioned to their, I know one student in my breakout group talked about talking to her parents about asking for support prior to the pandemic, and, you know, I don't know if they just didn't take her seriously, but because all this information is now out, she said that her parents now were willing to help her and move forward with her, and she said that actually made a big difference for her. And I also wanted to mention, too, that we had students from, we had people from all over Monroe County. I had people from Albany in my breakout group.
Really?
Yeah, maybe two or three people, superintendent, maybe a health professional from Albany. So there were people from all over reporting.
Sorry. So yes, one of our students was so impressive, and I, it was from Minden High School, and he talked about the stress of school, can't see your friends, isolation, stress of the Regents exam. And the most compelling thing he said was, he was very disappointed that the Regents would occur this year. And he said, "We don't need a Regents exam to show us, you know, how this year has gone." And so that was very compelling from that child. And anyway, and he referred to lower grades. So it was a wonderful presentation, and it was a wonderful time of advocacy. And so one of the biggest takeaways is from, we, our kids need access, and this is all Monroe County, some of the steps we've taken in that direction to get more mental health supports in our district, but some of the districts, it was, some of the kids were saying that they don't have access to counselors, and some of the children of color really wanted to see people of color to support them. And so those were some of the things that I took away from. I'm so happy that she did the form vote.
That's great. Excellent. So one of the, I took down a full page of notes, but one of the things that I found really interesting, whether it was at, there was a seventh grader who spoke in the opening, a 12th grader, and then college-level students. And across the board, they were talking about very similar experiences about, you know, how anxiety-ridden they're becoming when they have to log in to class. A lot of kids, you know, it's just screens, so they don't even know who it is that they're talking to in so many cases. They're really feeling that missing of the social interaction with their peers within the school setting, along with interacting with adults. I mean, this is one of the biggest places for kids to be able to socially interact. And this even I've experienced in the district that I work in, and again, it was across the board, especially with the seventh grader and the 12th grader, how they were talking about how many of their peers, if not for themselves, but how many of their peers are taking care of family members while they're attempting to do school. So it is, it is so difficult for so many of our kids across this county to really get in the type of learning that they need to be able to do without the distractions. So really, I would say, across the board, what we were hearing is, kids cannot wait to get back into the schools and to be able to learn in a traditional format, which I know we all agree with. And then the last thing, I took down some notes, but again, please add anything if I'm missing. At the very end, Samra came back on, and she was talking about the different things that she's really advocating for, and it's really similar things that we are all advocating for. So talking about adding money for schools, not just in our district, but again, across the county. You actually touched base on it, looking to spend some of that money for mental health professionals within our districts to add more of that, and kind of tandeming onto what Mike had said in his presentation. People really understand the need for what this transition going back is going to look like and the need for additional help. And then, you know, some other things, like being able to fix the approach and dealing with mental health crazies as they're unfolding, and also looking how to get more people involved within the field of mental health, just because that is definitely a shortage. So overall, I think we heard a lot of great speakers, young students to people within the profession, and overall, it really was, again, another great experience with Samra.
That's great. Thank you so much for attending. I appreciate it. That night, I had a conflict, so I wasn't able to attend, but I'm surely glad that we had board representation there, so thank you for being there.
Can I just add, Amy?
Sure.
At our next board meeting, we will be prepared to show our mental health survey results.
Okay. Val, also, Val and I met with Assemblywoman Burns briefly on Friday. It was cut short because she was going into session, but Val, I don't know if you want to report out on that.
Actually, can I just report out on all of them as a whole that I met with?
Go ahead.
It'd be easier.
Go ahead.
Because they actually all agreed on everything, which was really nice. So beginning Friday, or Monday morning last week at 9:00, all the way through Friday afternoon with Amy and Senator, or I'm sorry, Assemblywoman Burns, I met with Assembly members Harry Bronson, Sarah Clark, Marjorie Burns, and Senator Pam Helming individually. I'm also meeting with Senator Gallivan, I think, Friday as well. So what's interesting is, so much information changed between Monday and Friday, and I suspect it's still going to keep changing each for next Friday, or this Friday as well. But they all agreed on a couple of different points. One is that they do not want to use the federal COVID money to fund, to supplement our school-state aid. They're very, very clear, they do not want to do that. They want to hold on to that federal money. They also talked about, they all do not agree with consolidating the expense-based and categorical aid. This has been on our
This has been on our budget for a couple of years and, you know, probably just a bargaining chip, but nobody's supporting that again. And they're also all rejecting the changes to the STAR program as well. And they're pretty sure that's going to be a go, that those changes will not occur. They also, you know, a few of them talked about increasing that designated fund bounds to above, limit to above 4%. They all mentioned that they recognize the value of public education and that it's the number one economic developer, development tool that Monroe County has right now. So they see the value in it and they really want to protect public education. All of them said that. They are all looking, many of them talked about looking for revenue enhancers. We know that they've been talking about that and something like that. They expect something to go through on this budget. And many of them express their appreciation for school boards, for school districts, for doing teachers, staff members, for doing everything they possibly can to support our students this year. And, you know, typically we're thanking them for their time and for the things that they do for us. But this was, it was interesting to have them, many of them come out right away and say, "Thank you so much. We really appreciate everything you're doing." And I guess that's about it. I don't know if you want to add anything about Marjorie Burns?
No, I would agree with everything that you said. And actually, I would just add to that where it's amazing how, you mentioned the fact they're all on the same page, but how educated they are about education. It's really the first time that I can think of on my, in my years of service, that it's felt at least that the legislators are on the same page, which I think really helps. A lot of them are new, we're developing these relationships and the importance of educating them. They're self-educating. And many of them I know have spent quite a bit of time at the Monroe County School Boards Association on better understanding what schools are facing. So I think the more educated that they are, the more helpful they will be. But thank you, Val, very much for attending all those meetings because it's not possible for one person to attend all of, everything that is, that's being offered. So I really appreciate you taking that on, so thank you. Okay. We do have some dates to remember. We have the 18th of March coming up with a board tour at the Transportation, Central Maintenance and Food Service Building at 8:15. Can I just have a show of hands of who will be there? Robin, did you have your hand up? Okay. And Irene does too. Okay, super, thank you. And our next board meeting is on the 22nd of March. Human Resources Report, Sean.
Good evening, everyone is doing well. First, for your consideration is the professional staff report. There you will see, it really amounts to a temporary elimination of the Teacher Fellows Program for the second semester as those students will reassign. We will look to pick that up again in the fall. Also, you will see the fall coaching appointments for programs that have been K-1, now moving forward, as well as the volunteers that are attached to some of those programs. Those are listed for your consideration.
Thanks Sean, may I have a motion to approve, please? Robin and Renee, any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Second for your consideration is the support staff report. And you will see one appointment for a career-minded high school all time.
May I have a motion to approve? Thanks Pete and Ted. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you Sean.
Thank you very much.
Curriculum Report, Melanie.
Good evening, good evening. I'm your agenda is the, hopefully the adoption of the AP US History Textbook that was presented to the vice president and the holder. If you have any questions that you might have about giving this.
Any questions? Okay. Thanks Melanie. Special Education, Elizabeth.
Good evening, we have CSE and CPSE recommendations on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Superintendent's Report, Mike.
There is not a need for an executive session this evening. Want to bring the board back to the budget guidelines. You saw them last board meeting and then tonight you saw them officially during my presentation. I would like to offer them for your consideration.
Can you have a motion, please? I have Val and I had Robin. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Next for your consideration is approval of the 21-22 school calendar. It was a very interesting year, the way the dates felt. And I want to share with you some of the priorities that we tried to instill in the calendar this year as we looked at it and then some of the corresponding challenges. One of the dates that we wanted to recognize was Yom Kippur. And that is on September 16th, as one of the highest holy holidays for our Jewish community. And so we started the calendar by looking at having Yom Kippur off and then looking at a start date for students. September 6th is Labor Day. And so we were planning on starting school on September 7th. But September 7th is Rosh Hashanah. And normally we do not recognize Rosh Hashanah in the school calendar. But given thought about all of our students this year having either a remote or a hybrid experience and then having our Jewish families having to make a decision if they send their student, their children, to school on the first day of school, which is the 7th, seemed quite unfair to put the families in that predicament. And so we decided to make the 7th a conference day for staff. And then serving those school students on the 7th. And then given that Rosh Hashanah is a two-day holiday, the 8th came into question in that wanting students to have to choose between their first day of school being the 8th or not. So in this calendar this year, in September, what you'll see is Yom Kippur, the 16th being off, and Rosh Hashanah on the 7th and 8th being conference days for staff. And I hope that people can see the thought that went into that because we had to start really counting student days and staff days. And it was, it was tough, but we wanted this to be a very respectful calendar, knowing that Yom Kippur is a day moving forward, but we would like to keep for our Jewish community, having that off. Other dates of interest in the calendar that are different, are atypical than the years past. We do have June 20th off, which Governor Cuomo has recognized as observance of Juneteenth. And I think probably the other thing of interest in the calendar is the amount of staff conference days leading up to the first day of school. And so having Rosh Hashanah off for students on the 7th and 8th, and having staff stay on the first and second, also allows us four days of professional development and levels of preparedness to have students come back to us fully after an extended time off. So I'd like to ask if there's any questions relative to the calendar.
You want? May I have a motion to approve? Thanks Ted, thanks Renee. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
I would just like to note for the community that we are donating through the Pittsburgh Education Foundation $1,500 to our Student Opportunity Fund. It's an ongoing funding mechanism for our students that may need support with everything from applying to college, to paying for APs, to purchasing classes, to needing support in basically any way. And so we continue to gift to the Student Opportunity Fund. And then just if I can close with a few remarks. This Friday marks the one-year anniversary of closing schools from last year, which is hard to believe that we've been in the state of state for just about a full year now. I'd like to acknowledge my thoughts and prayers for all of those that have experienced loss of any kind over this last year. Because I think we've all lost at different levels something in the last 365 days. As a school community, I also like to recognize that we've endured so much together during this period. And while it's been very fatiguing, I couldn't be prouder of our focus on the wellbeing of our students, our colleagues, our families, our school community as a whole. Collaboration in our other values of continuous improvement and being progressive in our practices, supportive relationships, and being student-centered has allowed us to create the learning models that we have today. This past summer, approximately 80 of our stakeholders planned for a year without knowing all that it would entail. We went into the process relatively blindly. But working together and being extremely creative, we found a way to allow our K-5 students to attend school five days a week, while at the same time creating and improving a remote learning option, K-12, in a secondary hybrid learning model. Together, we created and managed a range of new health and safety protocols, including testing students and staff on campus during this year. We contended with different levels of anxiety throughout our school community. We contributed tens of thousands of dollars to families that were in need. We distributed over 1,000 computers to students and provided connectivity for families that did not have internet access, things that we should all be very proud of. We asked our teachers to teach both in-person and remotely. We asked our paraprofessionals to become teachers. We asked our nurses to take on double responsibility. We asked our teachers on special assignments to go back into the classrooms. We asked our parents to become bus drivers. We became contact tracers, we made home visits, we've been planning special events, and so on. The work that I've seen accomplished since our closure is beyond impressive and I'm filled with gratitude to our staff and to our community for consistently going above and beyond the call of duty. I recall many conversations that I've had with others at the start of the school year, wondering if we would make it to October before we had to close. And then thinking, can we just get to Thanksgiving? And then thinking about, can we just get to December break? And here we are today, still in school, we have not had to close. And me to thank everyone that's been involved in your diligence and keeping us open. So after our full year, after this being our anniversary week of contending with COVID, I do want to share why I feel that the end is in sight. We are now watching our community infection rates steadily decline. We have 60% of our staff fully vaccinated. And we will have about 84% vaccinated within the next couple of weeks. And it's my understanding that almost all staff have had access to vaccinations. And those that haven't, I will be working with them to sign up this week. I'd also mention that despite our thoughts about high-risk sports, we've navigated through them seamlessly. We've given our athletes testing and follow-up protocols. Our coaches have been on top of things. Our students pledge to be careful outside of their sport. So working together, we've made it work. We've had successfully expanded our in-person extracurricular clubs. We had zero positive cases from approximately 2,800 tests and have not experienced in-school transmission from students, to my knowledge. And all these data points are continuously reported to the state and to the county to assist us on when it is safe to reopen. So today, after meeting, with our regular meeting with Dr. Mendoza and all of the other Monroe County school districts, we shared similar sentiments and shared similar data. And we discussed the next steps for how to open more fully this year. So where we landed, which I think is a real good place, this week, the medical division of reopening Finger Lakes, which consists of epidemiologists from URM C and Rochester Regional, as well as primary physicians and pediatricians, they're going to meet to discuss our request to reopen schools per the CDC guidelines. And that means that once we enter the yellow zone, which again, in our area, means not exceeding 50 new cases per 100,000, we can then open without six-feet restrictions, but using our current mitigation strategies. During our call, it sounded like this could be approved and the yellow zone metrics could be met at the onset of the fourth quarter. So if we were to just think about that, it's exactly what we've been advocating for relative to clear metrics for reopening. And the CDC provided those. And according to our conversations today, we're heading in that direction where the metrics would allow us to open without having to have the six-feet distance throughout the day. The hard part with us is that New York State Department of Health has not approved or adopted the CDC guidelines yet. However, the Finger Lakes Medical Division for reopening, if that meeting goes well, would support our county to the state in order to reopen once we hit that community infection rate, which is exciting. So we don't necessarily know and won't have a date for reopening, but the trend, should it continue being low, it is possible for us to be open starting the fourth quarter. And we have been meeting, as you know, throughout, non-stop with our scenario planning committee to prepare for this. And so for example, one of the things that we know is that we're going to need a lot more desks, for example, because we won't be able to sit at circular tables still. So we're working on procuring everything from furniture and pulling people together to look at ramifications for what it will look like for students. So it's exciting news. At the same time, we're planning for senior events to make sure our students' senior year has a senior ball, has a senior parade, are able to maintain functions like senior awards night, and certainly graduation. So all good news. I'm proud of the work that our board and our advocacy team has done, demanding, asking for metrics to reopen. And it looks like we're able to see the light at the end of this tunnel. So thank you.
Thanks Mike. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Renee and Pete? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Old business? New business?
I have some new business. It's been a while since I've made a public comment, but given many conversations that I've had with various stakeholders in recent months, I would just like to make a statement about the state of the state. First of all, I just want to say that we view our district as a community. A community comprised of students, of staff, administration, and parents, all of whom have differing viewpoints, especially during this historic year. all of whom have differing viewpoints, especially during this historic year. All of our families have been impacted by the pandemic. We're worried about mental health, as we were discussing tonight. We're worried about mental health of our entire community, especially during this time. What I can say is, schools have done an extraordinary job maneuvering an unthinkable year. Everyone that I can think of has made monumental concessions because of COVID. Our students, our staff, our administration, and our families. This Board of Education has viewed the health and safety of our Pittsburgh school community as the number-one priority during this pandemic. We've exemplified our commitment to following best practices, guidelines, guidance with our local health commissioner since the onset of COVID. The reality is, there are subtle differences between state and local guidance, and we've consistently defaulted to the direction of our health commissioner. The eight people, well, some of us aren't seated right at the table. Hi, Irene. But the eight people sitting at this table are far from complacent about advocating for all of our students' safe return to school. We are one of the few districts who has K-5 students in schools five days a week this school year. This didn't just happen. It took a literal village to make this work. I have many other school districts that contact me to say, I can't believe Pittsburgh did this. We have remained steadfast in keeping up with the ever-changing demands of the governor's executive orders, including COVID testing, contact tracing, and providing data to support how schools have remained safe with the use of mitigation protocols. We're one of the few districts that has not experienced a temporary shutdown due to COVID transmission. Local superintendents and boards of education advocated to become testing centers when our communities were designated a yellow zone, allowing our schools to remain open. We have and will continue to advocate on behalf of our community by meeting with state and local legislators, as you heard at this table tonight, and the Department of Health officials. We'll also continue to provide data to the New York State Department of Health to help support a safe and full reopening of our schools. Our Pittsburgh Advocacy Committee led the charge in developing an advocacy letter that has been sent out to our greater community that most of Monroe County schools have now used to plea for the metrics needed to fully reopen schools. As board members, we received countless emails throughout our tenure of board service. It's our job as elected officials to seek, to understand, and address stakeholder concerns. It's been my goal as board president to make myself available to actively listen and address important issues brought to the Board of Education. It is at a board member's core to uphold the mission and vision of our district by remaining true to the values of collaboration and continuous improvement. It is also inherent that we, as board members, act with respect and integrity when responding to stakeholder concerns. However, this weekend, I received personal attacks, including requests to resign my position on the board via email based on misinformation that's circulating in our community. I've been wrongly accused of being a hypocrite and someone who does not have, in quotes, "a stake in the game" within public schools because I allegedly chose to send one of my children to a parochial school that is open five days a week due to the pandemic. Some of the emails went as far to say, when all this is over, Amy, there will be a reckoning. I sincerely ask you to look carefully in the mirror and make a reckoning of yourself now. Although I should not have to share my family's reason for selecting a different path for one of my four children, I believe the need to be fully transparent and dispel the false rumors initiated by a certain stakeholder group. I have four beautiful children. Three daughters who have graduated from Pittsburgh Sutherland High School. Twin daughters who graduated last year during the pandemic. My fourth child attended Allen Creek Elementary School through 5th grade. In 2016, over four years ago, my son expressed an interest in attending a parochial school that would offer both a spiritual and academic learning environment, something that we can't offer here. I'm not ashamed that my husband and I honored our son's personal wishes. So I would like to put misinformation that's out and circulating in interest groups to please stop. Superintendent Puro has emphasized the importance of civility in a year that's been wrought with unrest. As part of new business, I'd like to reemphasize Mr. Puro's message and go on record to say that I, along with everyone at this table, will continue to serve with the highest integrity, grace, and a commitment to advocate for what's best for students. Thank you.
So with that, we will open a public comment session. I'd like to just state the rules of engagement. I know we have quite a few people in the waiting room, which is great to see. We are going to limit comments to three minutes. My vice president, Mr. Rusty, will be keeping the time. And we will adhere to those three minutes because in recognition of all of those that are waiting. Please state your name and address as you enter into public comment. Hi, Justin. If you could unmute. There you go. Hi, Justin. How are you?
I'm fine, Justin. I would just like to, may I just ask this, sir? I'm a longtime president for Pittsburgh High School. I'm a advisor with Pittsburgh High School. And so is my wife Stacy. And in fact, you have had Pittsburgh High School multiple years ago. And that married 25 years.
Justin, can you just state your address for us?
What's that?
Can you just state your address for us?
Oh, 40 Times Court.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Sorry about that. We have a few boys that are going to pitch his words. Two of them have graduated and spoken hours later junior out of Pittsburgh High School. And Stacy, I want you to join this meeting and raise your hand to the board and Superintendent Puro for all the efforts you've made over this last twelve, last month while you worked with this pandemic as a society. It is not an easy time for anybody. And the courage that you have shown, given what you just shared with everybody, is absolutely incredible. And I just want to commend you for continuing to show up every day and advocate for these people. It is a huge, huge accomplishment to stop doing. Pittsburgh High School District is a fantastic place to live and educate. And it's fortunate that Stacy and I have been able to reach that here through Pittsburgh High School and several other schools at Pittsburgh High School. And Pittsburgh High School District. So thank you very much. Superintendent Puro, thank you so much. I know that you, as you pretend to tell me, that you are a parent and a master. And I just want to acknowledge that you're very, very supportive of our community. And keep holding a good heart for these kids. So I have to stop.
Thank you, Justin.
Can you say your name?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Greetings from the great state of Florida, where all kids are in school five days a week.
Vicki, your address, please?
Oh, yes. It's Vicki Better at 24 McCord Woods Drive. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. For the record, this past weekend, I was the individual leading a reproach of this sentiment now. The point that I was making is, school board members that sit on the school board overseeing the students in our district should be, have their own kids attending our district, advocating for all of our students to be in school five days. But I thank you, Amy, for taking the time to respond to me professionally. I do appreciate that. However, surprisingly, I received a follow-up email from the superintendent, even though I had not copied the mail and correspondence. The superintendent's email was not as professional and very line threatening. And as a taxpayer in this community, one who has every right to attend public meetings, to ask questions, offer differing opinions, and advocate for fully opening of the school district for all students, I find the messaging in this email to be somewhat disrespectful. And as a superintendent of this district, you are accountable to not only the parents who currently have students in school, but yes, as a member of the community, you are responsible to all taxpayers. And with that, it brings me back to the budget issue because I've been following finances and watching the budget meetings. Regarding this proposed budget that your team has been putting forth, I would encourage you to hold on any tax increase. Services have not been at 100%. The economy has been unstable. And there are members in this community who plan to take a job leave to stay home and educate their children. There are people that have lost their jobs. Or if they're fortunate enough to keep their jobs, they may have not gotten pay raises to pay your, you know, the budget tax increase.
Vicki, let's wrap it up.
One last thought. The town of Pittsburgh listened to the taxpayers last fall and went back to the table to rework their budget so there would not be a tax increase and across-the-board raises. So they went back to the table and they kept their budget flat. So I would encourage you to do the same. And I would encourage you to keep this an open meeting and have dialogue with all members of, they have paid the taxes of $189,000 for the budget.
Thank you, Vicki.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
There is no one else currently reading.
Okay. Thank you. With that, we are going to close public comment session. May I have a motion to adjourn, please? Thanks, Pete and Renee. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Good night, everybody.